Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we please stand for a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM. Twenty-sixth day of July. We're convening in the Alexander O'Connor Auditorium. The presiding officer is Mary Jane Desmond, acting chairperson of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, superintendent of schools; Mr. Kenneth Copaz, assistant superintendent for personnel; Dr. Gary Maida, board secretary; Mr. Leo J. Smith Jr., assistant superintendent for business; Dr. Dennis Degnan, assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction; Mr. Mitchell Pescual, Esquire of Board Council. The meeting's open to the public. Pursuant to the notice advertised in the Jersey Journal on July 14, 2017, tonight the public may comment on an addendum to the interim superintendent's contract, which has been approved by the executive county superintendent. I'll take a roll call of our members. Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Finnerty.
Present.
Trustee Garillic.
Present.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
And Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. Chairperson.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least forty-eight hours, giving the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The board secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and Bayonne Community News. And notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the city of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
Just one more comment before we start this evening's meeting. We ask anyone that plans on asking a question this evening, please come up and fill out a card. Put your name, your address, your question, whether it's in regards to a particular resolution or if it's an open portion, open question for the open portion meeting. We will not be taking questions without a card. So if anyone might have come in a little late after I made my announcement, if you would like to come up, there are some cards up here on the front of the stage. You still have time to fill them out. I'll start with our consent agenda. As you see on our agenda, our consent is Resolutions Item 1 to Number 49. Number 29 will be removed and voted on as non-consent. So our consent agenda is 1 to 49. I'm sorry, I'll get it for you. 1 to 49 without Number 29. So we'll start with that. Our consent agenda, is there a motion?
I motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
So on our consent agenda, we have a motion and a second. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
And Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. I'll ask everybody. Why don't we do it now? Let's go to Number 29. And all our bulletin boards, all our resolutions are on the bulletin board. Whereas there's a need in the Bayonne School District for facilitators for the professional learning community project. This is Resolution 29 and is on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I motion.
And do I have a second? Trustee Cruden.
I'll second.
Second, thank you. On that motion and second, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Abstain.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. Okay, that will bring us to our first resolution on non-consent. Resolution 50. Okay, whereas it's been determined that a vacancy exists for a board-certified behavior analyst in the Bayonne Public Schools. Whereas the superintendent, Dr. Michael A. Wonko, has recommended the appointment of the below-named staff pending criminal history review, therefore be it resolved that the staff member listed is hereby appointed to the position of behavior analyst for the city of Bayonne School District on a twelve-month basis for the period September 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, with a salary of $98,128 per annum, subject to board discretion, single medical coverage with carrier to be determined by the Board of Education. Daniela G. Do I have a motion on Number 50?
I will make a motion.
And a second?
I will second.
So we have a motion and a second on Resolution 50. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
And Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. 51. Whereas it's been determined that a vacancy exists in certain disciplines in the Bayonne Public School District. Whereas the superintendent of schools, Dr. Michael A. Wonko, has recommended that the appoint the below-named staff pending criminal history review. The employee's name is Mike McHale, a teacher of physics, $55,684. Appointment date, September 1, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I will second.
So we have a motion and second on 51. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. 52. Whereas the Board of Education has employees in positions who are not represented or covered by a collective bargaining agreement with regards to their terms and conditions of employment and salaries. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to establish the salaries for those unrepresented employees for the 2017-18 school year, therefore be it resolved that the salaries of the following non-represented personnel are hereby approved or amended or approved as per the attached list. Be it further resolved that all other terms and conditions of employment for those unrepresented employees with the exception of salary, work, day schedule, and work calendar shall continue to be determined in accordance with the respective collecting bargaining agreements of similarly situated represented employees, except that part-time, non-certificated employees shall not be entitled to sick leave. Be it further resolved that this resolution, except for the newly hired behaviorists, shall be effective retroactive to July 1, 2017. Do we have a mo... And this is on our bulletin board. Do we have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I will second.
So we have a motion and second on 52. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
And Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. Resolution 53. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education is authorized to reduce the number of teaching staff members employed in the district whenever in the judgment of the board it is advisable to abolish any such positions for reason of economy or for other good cause pursuant to NJSA 18A 28-9. Whereas for reasons of economy, the board previously reduced the number of teaching staff positions through such reduction in force effective June 30, 2017. Whereas in light of changed circumstances since the time of such reduction in force, the board finds it advisable to rescind such action and restore a number of those employees to their prior positions in the district. Therefore be it reserved by... Resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education is followed that the reduction in force affecting the following positions effective June 30, 2017 is hereby rescinded. Bayonne Board of Education, six staff members that the individuals identified on the attached list be restored to their prior positions and promptly provided appropriate notification of their employment status and that the superintendent or his designee is authorized to provide the necessary notification to the affected employees. This is Resolution 53. The six staff members are up on the board. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I will second that.
So we have a motion and second on 53. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
And Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. 54. Similar to the Resolution 53, I will not read the whole thing, but that the reduction in force affecting the following positions effective June 30, 2017 is hereby rescinded by the Bayonne Board of Education. It is four staff members, two bus drivers, two custodians, Number 54. It is on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I will second that.
Great. On that motion and second, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
And Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. 55. Whereas a Board of Education may transfer certified and non-certificated employees... I'm sorry, let me start that over. Whereas a Board of Education may transfer certificated and non-certificated employees upon the recommendation of the chief school administrator pursuant to NJSA 18A 27-4.1. Now therefore be it resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education that the following recommendations of the interim superintendent pursuant to NJSA 18A 27-4.1, that the administrators identified on the attached list be transferred, reassigned to the positions identified on the said list, that the affected employees will promptly be provided appropriate notification of their employment status, that the interim superintendent or his designee is authorized to provide the necessary notification to the affected employees. Resolution 55. It is on our bulletin board. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I will second.
On a motion and second on Resolution 55, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Abstain.
Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. We have five votes. 56. Once again, whereas a Board of Education may transfer certificated and non-certificated employees, therefore be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent, that the individuals listed on the attached list be transferred, reassigned. The affected employees will be promptly appropriate notification of their employment status and that the superintendent or his designee is authorized to provide the necessary notification to the infected employees. This is Resolution 56. It is that long resolution on the last bulletin board that you would take a look at. Do we have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I second.
Okay. Motion and second on Number 56. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
And Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. I have one last resolution that we added. I will read it into the record, Number 57. Whereas on February 6, 2017, the U.S. Department of Education Office for Civil Rights, the OCR, received a complaint made against the Bayonne Board of Education alleging violations on the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, whereas the complaint alleges that certain pages of the district's website are not accessible to students and adults with disabilities, including but not limited to those individuals with visual and/or physical impairments. Whereas the OCR has proposed a resolution agreement for resolution of the complaint and whereas the board has determined that it is in the best interest of the district that the complaint be resolved amicably and that the district effectuate the district's website changes needed to comply with the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Therefore be it resolved by the Bayonne Board of Education that the attached resolution agreement be and is hereby authorized and approved and the Board of Education president and/or other necessary officer or employee of the board be and is hereby authorized to execute the resolution agreement and to take any and all actions necessary to complete and realize the intent and purpose of this resolution. Trustee, motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I will second.
So we have a motion and second on Number 57. Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Finnerty.
Yes.
Trustee Garillic.
Aye.
Trustee Luande is absent. Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
And Vice President Will Back and President Broderick are absent. Okay. We have a... This is the open portion of the meeting. We have a list of questions. I'll go up and get those. I remind everyone that you have three minutes. I'll ask you to come up to the microphone. Please restate your name and your address. And please go through the chair, which is Desmond. So we will start with Mark Downey, 101 West 41st Street. It's Mark here. Okay, Mark's coming up to the microphone.
Mark Downey, 101 West 41st Street. We wanted to ask about the timing of the change in the academy where it was done after people were accepted and made plans and said no to other choices that they had that are now shut out. If you're going to make the change, we can discuss that another time. But why was it done now? Could not wait till the next year.
As you probably know, I... Is that better?
No.
This isn't cutting into my time, is it?
No.
I will start. Don't worry. As you may or may not know, I was hired as an interim so that I could get the district back in the financial state that it belongs so that the permanent superintendent would be able to have a good chance to be successful. I did not start until July 1. If I'm waiting another year to make changes, I can only have a two-year span if I get appointed again. So what would be the sense of waiting? You tell me.
Okay, that's great from your point of view. Now what do you tell the kids here who are not being served right? That my kid could have went to county prep, but now I have to scramble around here. That's what I'm saying. I understand that's your point of view.
I didn't hear the end of your statement.
No, I'm saying my kid could be going to county prep, but I don't have that choice anymore. I have... That was the idea of having the academy that was promised to me that was applied for. That's what I'm saying.
All right, I understand what you're saying.
And I understand you're the fall guy. I guess that's why you're here for your... You take the fall. We hope you get this straight now.
No, no. Let me assure you. All the academy courses are still in place. Your child will still be getting the rigorous education that they signed up to achieve. So I don't understand why you're that upset about not being in high-tech high school.
Well, I'll tell you what. Why don't we back up a little bit? I would love to see... How much money are we saving by dismantling or changing or whatever say the academy? I don't see where the savings is. Someone help me out. You still need teachers? You still need classrooms?
I'll share some numbers with you, if you like. First of all, to establish the academy, we spent $2,529,853.
Spent, that's past tense, okay.
Which means we are a year or two behind in our facilities plan, correct, Mr. Smith? About a year or two?
Yes, Dr. Wilson.
So some of this money could have been used, for example, to replace the roof here, $300,000. You're asking me a question. I'm giving you the answer.
No, no, okay, I'm listening, but I'm... Okay.
So that money was earmarked to build an academy when I would have used it in a triage situation to repair buildings where they need repairs. That's one savings. We had a course that was offered zero period called Seminar.
Right.
No credit given. Does not count for college. Zero credit. Maned by two teachers. That cost was $149,600. So each student's cost was $1,133. The biodome for the summer, to take care of it, $16,000. And it's not even being used now. Salary difference for teachers. If you're teaching less students in a class than someone else, this is the way it breaks down. A traditional English 9A class would be, for last year, I'm using these numbers, $595. And for Mr. DeAngelo's edification, the way we broke that down was it came to $75 a course per day by using a medium salary of a teacher at the high school. So traditional English Level A, $595. Academy English 9A, $1,118. Traditional World History A, $684. Academy World History, $1,118. Academy film costs per student, $2,266. Well over that $595. So these are actual savings moving forward.
Okay, and I don't disagree with you about the class size. Someone teaching, you know, nine kids or, you know, what, six kids is not... I agree with you. That's just not acceptable. But I'm also talking to the board here. What are we looking at down the line? Where we can say, we have an academy, you're trying to build all this luxury housing in town and attract people, and we're going to say Bayonne education is good? Eh, it's just good enough. We're in the bottom third of the state. I don't know how this is ever going to change. I understand he's got to fix the money. What are we going to do while it happens in these walls here? That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, I can tell you that part of the plan is also reconfiguring the high school where we will have four vice principals put in a role where they will be doing more observations of instruction to raise the rigor in every class, not just honors classes or AP classes. We'll be doing training for those teachers as well. And our idea is to raise everyone up to a higher level. But again, you're getting the same courses you had before. It's just that we put everyone into the same bucket so that we could lower the cost by having more students in the class.
Okay, well, that's how it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, Dr. Wonko, perhaps it would be easier if you gave an explanation of your vision of change in organization or reorganization of the district so that people will have some idea... And you're not cutting into some... I'm sorry. You're not cutting into somebody's time when they're trying to talk and if...
I would be happy to do that, Madam President. As you know, I was thrust in a very difficult situation. But I've lived in Bayonne all my life. I've been educated in Bayonne schools and I have a vested interest in what I am doing. And I'm here because I truly want to fix this particular situation so that every student in Bayonne, pre-K through graduation of high school, will have an equal and fair educational opportunity so they can become the best they can. That being said, we had to make changes for economy, but there will be rigor. One of the changes you might have seen on the board was my attempt to make sure all of the elementary schools had at least another administrator on campus so that they would have two people there because those were cut back. So I moved some high school people So I moved some high school people to the elementary level to provide that coverage. Again, going down to four vice principals in the high school will allow us to hire four deans at no cost to the district. The deans will be the persons who will be helping students make the right choices. The vice principal will now be more of an educational leader doing observations of instruction, so that that rigor can be raised in every class. Before I go any further, do either of you gentlemen want to add anything to what I said about the reconfiguration?
No, Doc, as you said, we will have an assistant principal following those children from ninth, 10, 11, and 12, which is, as we know, education, the most important thing in education is the relationship between educator and student. So you're going to build on that, and then you're going to have four deans to work with those assistant principals, where we will make sure that our hallways are silent and our classrooms are alive, and we're looking forward to it, Doc.
So, the important point that Mr. Lopez was making there is, you'll have two people moving with your class. So as you enter as a ninth grader in the high school, you'll have a vice principal and a dean who will be with you ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. So they will get to know you, you will get to know them. Dr. DeGno.
And then, the assistant principals that were formerly dealt with discipline will now have the opportunity to work with the teachers in educational leadership. The most important part is the conversations that are taking place with the teachers. So now we'll have an opportunity for pre-conference, post-conference, an opportunity to look at their growth objectives and their goals. This is something that doesn't happen as much as we'd like, we want to make sure it's happening all the time, and by having the deans, it frees up them to work with the observation evaluation process along with the assessments.
And, due to the fact that we're going to the four room, and we are going to have an assistant principal go down to the elementary, as well as a director housed in the elementary schools, one of the major concerns that we had when we had a rift, parents came out and they were heard, and they were right, you know, worrying about the safety and security of my student, we need an assistant, you know, principal at my school when we have 700 students. That's correct. So now, we came up with a plan where it's not going to cost the district any money, but we are going to provide that support where we have assistant principals at least part of the week at each school. So it's fair, it's equal, and I think this plan is going to be successful.
I received various emails, as you can imagine, which I've answered each one, also phone calls, answered each one, and met with any parent or student who wanted to meet. One of the recurrent themes that seemed to come up, sometimes not as clearly as you would expect it to come up, was a concern about safety in the high school. And I have asked Principal Baccarella to be here this evening so he could address that issue for those people who might have that concern. Would you like to say a few words? You don't have to fill out a card.
Dr. Wong, thank you, I love talking about Bayonne High School. And I can assure you, with the facility that we have, the cooperation from central administration, the cooperation from the Board of Ed, the superior performance of administrators, teachers, and security, we have, with the manpower and technology that we have, we have the most secure building that I can almost guarantee in this county. But one of the things that I like to offer to parents, grandparents, relatives, and matter of fact, any citizen of this city, I can stand here and speak about anything, and you would be unsure of what I'm saying. So I offer you the opportunity to walk my walk. If anyone is interested in giving me just brief notice, make an appointment, I'll block out time, I don't want to waste your time, come up and visit us at the high school, I can walk you through this building and show you exactly what you would like to see. So when you leave, you're going to say, "I walked the walk and I understand," because you could hear things and I can say things. And we do this with our eighth graders coming up, we call it freshmen for a day. Your best mission is to come up and visit us. So I offer that to anyone, a little bit of notice, and we'll take a walk around Bayonne High School, and I'll be happy to show everybody around. Thank you so much, Dr. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Baccarella. Madam President?
Back to the questions.
Okay, I saw no one, you know, we let Mark have more than three minutes, but there's a reason for that. Most of the, oh, I'd say about 11 cards that I have are all on the same subject. The chairperson thought it would be best that central office get their overview of their plans, it might answer some of the other questions, but I'm still going to allow you to come up and ask your question if you'd like. So the next card I have is Lisa Downey, 101 West 41st Street, if you'd still like to
Lisa Downey, 101 West 41st Street in Bayonne. The letter that was sent about the academy, the decentralization, sort of made an aside as finances, you mentioned how much the academy costs to put together, that money's not coming back, we spent it. So, using that as, oh, we're going to save money, that's not saving money. Secondly, more so about, you offered terms of an academy, not just, here's the courses we're offering, this is the atmosphere, this is the educational environment, this is the physical location where your children are going to be, we made choices based on that. You changed the terms without giving us a chance to have any time to act accordingly. Whether you decide, oh, Bayonne High School's okay, it's safe, or it's just, it's not about whether it's safe or whether it's, it's not about any of that, it's about us making personal decisions for our own children, and we're the only ones that get to make that for them. You don't get to tell us, no, this will be okay. So I don't understand how you can just pull that back from us. You offered something, these were the terms, you presented it as one thing, and now you're saying, oh, no, by the way, in six weeks, it's something totally different.[814.48][814.48](APPLAUSE).
I just want to be clear, what is it, can you be more specific for me? What do you think has changed that has an adverse effect for your child?
My child is not going to be centrally located in one area of the building. Their classes can be anywhere in this building, their lunch will be in the main cafeteria, their gym will be in the main gym. My son is a senior, I know how it goes, he's gone through three years in the academy already, I know how it goes. It's going to be a completely different situation for my daughter, who's coming in as a ninth
So it's location, lunches?
It's the whole educational environment, it's the whole environment, you built an academy...
Please don't yell out, the courses we've been told are the same, I'm trying to get to the heart of the problem, because it's important to resolve. So, the concern is, physical location, lunch, period, and I'm sorry, you did say something else.
Gym.
Gym.
I understand this, you know, that Seminar went away, I get that, even zero-period gym, I understand that part. But, for me as a parent, you know what, having a separate wing where they were confined to two floors, basically, to the most of the day, that was appealing to me, and I get to make that choice. And if I had known that that was not a choice, then we probably would have made other choices for especially my daughter's high school education. But you took that choice away from me, because you offered something in January, and now in July, you took it away. Well, it's too late for us, people gave up scholarships, people gave up acceptances to other programs that were more along the lines of what we were looking for. And for the board, superintendent, for anyone, a taxpayer, citizens, for anyone to come along and tell me, no, this is good enough, no, I get to make that choice. I don't want to make that for anyone else, but I don't want anyone else making it for me either.
Lisa Downey, thank you for your time and your question. Next up, and these are all questions on the academy, Mr. Mark Yosef, 40 East 26th.
Hello, my name is Mark Yosef, I abide in 40 East 26th Street. So, I'm a student of the STEM track in the academy, and I'm a future biomedical engineer. I am telling you, the academy classes are different from CP classes. They're, the student enrichment is different, the student courses, how we are being ostracized outside the academy, it's different. Also, Seminars, we did get credits for it, we got five credits, I know because my schedule said I got five credits on it. I'm a junior and I know this. I also have a letter that I want to put in the record, if that's okay? For, like, all the people that are reading, including President Broderick and Vice President. So the academy made a difference for me. The academy made me love science, the academy made everyone have a guild where people support each other. It's a supportive environment. Outside the academy, it's like putting people, good apples inside a group of bad apples. Now, the good apples are being contaminated. And the environment may be good, but it's not enough, our opinions are, we are being
I do want to address that, no one's to be ostracized, no one, but everyone is entitled to the same enrichment that can be found or created if it doesn't already exist, everyone is deserving of the same feelings you have about the programs you've been through, and I do believe, I won't answer for him, it's certainly my concern, and I believe most of us, but I do believe that's the intent here, but I am taking copious notes on everything everyone's saying, because we all want resolution.
Also, because Superintendent Ikawanko, he also stated that $2 million was spent, but it wasn't just funding from, like, the school itself, we got IMTT to sponsor us, we got Carepoint Health to give us $500,000. It's not, we want to know, how much money did the actual school spend?
All right, the number I gave is after backing out all contributions, grants, and donations, that $2,529,853.25 was taxpayer money.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Mr. Roger Malone, 23 Edward Court. And after Roger, it'll be Eugene Beggar, you can get yourself ready.
Good evening, Roger Malone, 23 Edwards Court. My question is simple, it is about the zero period, because I don't think it's as simple as it's been talked about here. My daughters are seniors here, they still have zero period, correct, juniors and seniors kept it? My son is an incoming freshman, he's not going to have the option for zero period. Zero period, as you explained, it was Seminar, actually, zero period was gym, so I believe they could...
There is a zero-period gym as well, you can opt to take that, and that has always been co-mingled.
Right, but we don't have the option to take it now as an eighth grader coming in, correct? As a ninth grader?
Yes, you do.
We're not, we're going to have zero period?
You could be in zero period, absolutely.
I think he's the superintendent.
You can elect zero-period gym to get an extra course in your schedule.
Freshmen couldn't, that's the letter I got from you, I thought said no zero period for the incoming, the juniors and seniors are keeping it, ninth and 10th grade weren't going to have it.
All right, I have to ask Mr. Baccarella on this, wasn't zero open to freshmen or only upperclassmen?
It was open at some point in time, and then several years ago, we decided that zero period was freshman, unless they were extremely academically competent and were recommended for it, it was generally not open to ninth and tenth.
All right, then I could say to you, if they meet that criteria, where they are academically well superior, that we would allow them to take zero period, would that be correct?
The issue is, many people chose zero period, which didn't allow them to help get the four-year learning, and it was a longer day than a nine-period day, and we found it was extremely, extremely challenging, unless they were extremely likely to go. So in general, it's not, but obviously, if someone meets the criteria, it's not easy.
So it's going to be very restrictive then.
May I ask for the balance of the meeting, is there a seat for Mr. Baccarella and a microphone so he can participate?
We have one right here.
Okay, well, as to my question, my daughters were given the opportunity for being in the academy, they had zero period all three years so far, and they're going to have it their fourth year. I understood from your letter, my son wasn't going to have it, now possibly he could on a maybe. The reason we chose the academy over money from St. Peter's Prep, Marist, Hudson Catholic, and County Prep, he wanted to come here to do what my daughters did, take zero period to get the extra class at science at the end. So right now, the way I'm taking your letter, my daughter's going to graduate with four more electives than my son is going to have the opportunity to do in science, which is his goal.
Well, we just said, he would be eligible to go into that zero period.
But, that's a possibility, you said maybe some select kids who were gifted possibly could get it.
Not gifted, that can meet the academic challenge of a rigorous day which would have an extra period in it. Isn't that what you said, Mr. Baccarella?
That is correct.
Okay, so, nothing changed for my son then, he's going to come in, he's going to have zero period, and he's going to have the...
He can call tomorrow the counselor to ask for zero period, and that person will take care of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Eugene is coming up next, Didi Botino is after Eugene.
Good evening, my name is Eugene Beggar, 78 West 48th Street. He was a young man, just recently, you know, he got some backlash, I think he just misspoken. What we're talking about, Art Academy had pretty much rigorous entry program, you couldn't be just average student, you had to work extra hard to get here, you had to will, to have a good grades, you know, and pass all exams. Some kids want to do it, some kids don't want to do it, some parents push kids to do it, some parents don't push kids to do it. But now, they getting back into the same mix, you know? My daughter, she's not the best student in Washington School, Mr. Lopez knows her, but she willing to work hard, she worked extra hard this year to have first honors, you know, and we went to high-tech, we went to county prep, and we went to Art Academy. And we believed that Art Academy was, could give those two schools run for their money. But now, you're just stepping back into, it's just stepping backwards right now, you know, with all these changes, because it is environment, there is selective process. Who got in Ivy League school from here, this year? I believe we got a scholarship from Princeton and other schools, right, that was students from Art Academy? They were willing to push themselves more, they get more homework, way more homework than a regular high school. Is it true or not?
The same, the same teachers that taught those students last year, the year before, are the same teachers who are teaching the students this year, next year, and as I said, we're raising rigor for all students. This is a public school, it is a public school, but this school were shaped to be unique school, you know? Art Academy could have been one of the best schools, not just in New Jersey, it probably would be in a country level, if you would push and keep what you had, please don't ruin it. You know, you, you're going to spend money right now to training other teachers, what you mean, that other teachers who teach in regular high school, they not qualified? They not as good as Art Academy teachers? I never said that.
No, you said that you're going to be training more, give, provide more training to teachers, to raise them to...
That's all, all teachers, that includes teachers who teach academy courses, that's a normal thing to do, it's called professional development.
Dr. Wong, if you're giving a homework to the student who average, let's say, 70s, in their 70s, and they not willing to do more work, you know, it's personal choice, it's parents too, you know, but some student push themselves, they get 90s, some student push themselves to get maybe 70s, just pass by, and you give them a lot what you're giving in Art Academy, are they going to survive?
I've always found that students will reach the level you set for them, if you set the bar low, that's what they'll reach, if you set the bar high, that's what they'll reach. We're setting the bar high for every student.
You, okay.
Thank you for your question, but your three minutes is up, thank you for your time. Next up is Ms. Didi Botino, and then after that is Katie Harriman.
Good evening, I just have a statement. I have a 17-year-old daughter that she was given scholarships when she graduated eighth grade for practically all the schools, she was accepted. We chose the academy, I think it's a wonderful program for me as a mother and a parent, I just feel that the academy, they have exceptional teachers, every marking period, she's going into her senior year, she has been first honors, my daughter strives, my daughter stays home, she does her projects, whether it takes her a week, two weeks, she studies. The academ, you know, what I've seen, what these teachers have given her, and given her so many opportunities, and it's just getting her ready for college, which to me, as a parent, is very important. We do have PS14, isn't it similar, isn't it the same that these kids have to take a test, have to come in, you're chosen, and for my daughter, she was one of the students that was chosen on her own merit, by her grades, by everything that she submitted, they had her taken a mathematics exam just to see if she was capable to be in the scholars' program, and I'm sorry, but I don't want my daughter with all the regular other students, and, and nothing against them, but when you're saying you're setting the bar high, well, if she's in classes with kids that don't care, and she's had a class where there's students that she comes home and says, "Mom, I'm a sophomore, and these kids are graduating seniors, they know nothing, they ask me for the answers." So, I mean, I understand that you're, you know, it's numbers, and, and I do understand that, but there's so many other cities that have charter schools, they have other places, I, I felt that, and I was sold, my daughter, you know, when your children are getting this public school education, why should they go out of town? Why should they go to another high school? And then these high schools are getting the ranks, that they're, that really, these children got their education right here from the Board of Ed, from Bayonne.
I'd like to respond to you within the three-minute time limit.
Sure.
But if you continue, I won't be able to do that.
I'm sorry.
First of all, I disagree with you regarding the rest of the teachers in the school. It's not the rest of the teachers in the school. We're all one family. The teachers are all here to teach the students. Regarding a rescue school, their gifted and talented program, we increased by ten percent to help save money. We also, the neighborhood school concept, we went up to twenty-eight students in the class, the same as we did in every other class. Those students eat lunch with the students from the neighborhood. So that argument about I don't want my child in the same lunch period really doesn't hold water. If they're in a rescue school, they're in the same lunch. Bayonne High School is a comprehensive school for the entire city. It's not a standalone magnet school. Did anyone wanna add anything, or you're okay?
Thank you.
They didn't want to add, so we're okay.
What?
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Harrigan, and then after Katie is Tracy Ferry.
Good evening. My name is Katie Harrigan and I live at 136 Lexington Avenue. I'm a sophomore at Bayonne High School and I'm speaking tonight to voice how devastating the, the removal of the academy and Laura Craig's position is to myself and many fellow students. I came to Bayonne High School last year with a great image of what the next four years would be. I was a musical theater and drama major in the Academy of Fine Arts and Academics. I was thrilled to have been in such a specialized program that would train me properly for the performance career I wish to pursue. When I first heard about the removal of Mrs. Craig's position, I was nervous and questioned the fate of the academy. Now, I'd like to say that I'm not trying to say that I was more special because I was in the academy program, but I was promised a certain experience and I made, I'd made my decision based off of that. Mrs. Craig held many of our programs together and I knew that without her, the fate of my high school experience would change. Shortly after her removal, I got a letter which basically told me that the academy was gone and suddenly the image I had mentioned before was no longer my reality. The decentralization of the academy affects students like me, students who are involved in the arts program and not honors students. I've been doing theater here at Bayonne High School for seven years. This auditorium has become my second home and the stage you're sitting on has made itself a very special place in my heart. And there was one person who made all of that so meaningful and perfect for myself and so many others, and that person was Mrs. Craig. She cared, she cared so much about each cast member individually and pushed us all to be the best that we could be. I was given so many incredible opportunities through this program because she saw the potential in me. She saw the potential in all of us. Mrs. Craig showed the same care and devotion to the students of the academy and it made my experience as a freshman so much easier knowing that she was there, and I took comfort in knowing that she would be there for the rest of my high school career. And it breaks my heart that the next three years will be so different and I will not be getting the academy experience that I was promised. I'm the kind of student who needs to have a more specialized educational experience where the teacher knows me, where the teachers know me and can offer me help based off of who I am as a person. In the academy, I felt like I was more than just another student, but because of your decision, I will not get the help I need. Many of us were robbed of the academy experience that we were promised by you, and that's not only disappointing for many of us, it's just plain wrong. But I guess whoever made this ultimate decision doesn't really care about what's right and what's wrong.
Jessica?
Katie, could you pin up your speech, would you please, give it to the reporter for the record?
Sure.
Katie, can I also make a request? You mentioned you received a letter that the academy was gone. Is there any way we can get, that I can get a copy of that letter where the, where it states the academy will no longer exist, please?
It was the decentralization letter, the academy was. That should have gone through the chair, and it is the same letter we got.
Okay, but that, that does not mean that the academy's gone.
We're gonna get back to.
We'll get back, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
So Tracy, Tracy Ferry is up, and then after Tracy is Joanne Harrigan.
Good evening. Tracy Ferry, 74 West 14th Street. My son is a senior here. He's been with the academy since freshman year. I'm not really worried about him be, having classes in other parts of the building. He's fine, he'll do fine, he'll be fine, whatever. But the whole point of the academy, in my opinion, and probably most of the people who send their children there, these kids work their butts off. They all feed off of each other, they work together, and from my experience of my daughter who's in, who just graduated from Bailey School, she would come home every single day with a complaint about the kids who wanted no part of school, who wanted nothing to do with their education. And as far as the academy goes, these kids worked hard, worked together, they all had the same common goal, and you're taking it away from them. You're taking it away. Now, as far as the decentralizing of the academy and offering honors classes and AP classes to all of your students, I agree, everybody should have that opportunity. But the fact of the matter is that these kids don't want, there's a large majority of these kids that don't want that opportunity and will never want the opportunity and don't care. Okay? You have how many, approximately how many students in Bayonne High School?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven hundred students?
Twenty-six hundred students.
Okay. You're offering the opportunity to everybody. Do you have twenty-seven hundred spaces in honors and AP classes?
Would you like me to answer? I will say this, when I was principal here, and I'll say it again as the interim super here, as many students that qualify for an honors or AP class, we make that class available.
Okay.
We have always done that, we will continue to do that.
So you have to qualify?
Let me finish you, ask the question. Students will now be admitted by an expert in the field, a person who is certified in mathematics will be the one making that decision. A person certified in science will make that decision. You'll now have eight set of eyes watching rather than two sets.
Okay, but you have to qualify, you have to have the grades.
You have to qualify, absolutely.
Exactly, which means it's not available to everybody.
It is available, but you must qualify.
As long as you have the grades, which is exactly what the academy was about. You applied, you had the grades, you got in.
So we're saying the same thing.
But we're, but we're not. Now, our, the students from the academy will now be put into classes that are also, that will also include kids that don't wanna be there, that don't care.
No, they have to qualify the same way. If they're in an AP course, everyone in there has to qualify.
How many seats are gonna be available for AP and honors classes?
For every student that qualifies, we will have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Same for honors.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next up is Joanne Harrigan. After Joanne is Nancy Novabrino.
Could I have my questions on the board? Good evening. I'm Joanne Harrigan, 136 Lexington Avenue, and I hope that I speak as well as my daughter Katie did. I am here to express my concern about the academy, and I think it's important as a parent to say that no student or child is better than anyone else. And I would hate to feel that people would think that academy children or students are better than anyone else. And I, it hurts me to hear if, if that's what's coming across. I'm in a bit of a unique situation. Katie is my third child. My son went to St. Peter's Prep. Mr. Smith knows that well, we've had many conversations about that. My daughter Casey came here before the academy was an academy and she had honors and AP classes and ended up graduating valedictorian. Katie, and all of our, all of us know our children, the academy setting was right for Katie. Katie is a drama and musical theater major. She's in the arts track. That's what's important to her. That setting was right for her. So basically, I mean, I had all of these things written down. What it more is about, it's almost like a contract with these kids. They worked, they applied, they wrote essays, they auditioned to be in an academy. When they got that, when they got that letter, and I bet every one of us has the picture of our child holding, you're accepted, doesn't mean they're better than anybody else, it means they got what they applied for and what was presented to them that their high school experience was going to be. I understand finances, I've worked in public education for twenty-seven years, I understand it, but this was a contract with these kids. They look to you and this process, and they believe in a process that they feel now, and it is being taken away from them. Yes, they're gonna be in their honors and AP classes, but it was an academy setting that, and lunch is not that big of it, you can eat lunch with anyone, I mean, it's the real world, I'm not worried about the cafeteria. It's what they said they were going to have. You were going to be in the academy for fine arts and academics, that was part of your high school experience. You were accepted to that for four years. You had to maintain things to stay there, whether it was an honors track, as, you know, a STEM track, you had to maintain grades to stay there, you have to do juries for drama and musical theater to stay a part of that. The drama and musical theater, when you come and see these shows, they're spectacular. They need to stay that way. These kids deserve that, just like the honors kids deserve those things so they can get into, every child is different. So basically, to me, this was a contract with these kids. They applied, they did their part, they're meeting those, those expectations. And I feel like your job is to keep your end of the contract with them. And then perhaps, the freshmen that have been accepted, then if we feel that this needs to be decentralized, when they graduate, there is no more academy. That's fair. The money is spent, I feel like maybe the class sizes do need to be raised, that's fine, I understand not, it's not financially prudent to spend a salary on six students, so maybe that, that can be put together somehow, but I feel like this is a contract, the kids did their part, and I feel like you all need to do yours as well.
All right.
So, thank you.
We, we also had a contract with fifty-nine teachers who are no longer employed by the Board of Ed.
I, I understand that and I know many of them, but the children.
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you once, did I?
Oh, I'm just responding, I didn't think I was interrupting.
I'm trying to answer your question.
Okay.
We only have a three-minute time limit on each person, and I'm trying to answer everyone to the best of my ability, but if I keep getting cut off, I can't do that. Again, we had a contract that we were supposed to keep with teachers. We got into this financial situation, we can no longer honor that contract. We are trying to bring back as many people as we can so that we have our commitment met. We did the same with the academy. We decentralized, we're still offering the same courses. The music and art program you're talking about, and then the drama are still here. I did see the production opening night of the elementary portion, which was excellent. Mr. Baccarella can tell you that's still going to be going on for the upcoming year, correct?
Yes, it is.
No, and that's comforting to me.
I'm sorry, Ms. Harrigan, you have three minutes.
Sorry. Okay, thank you very much.
Do you need an answer? Well, we're way over three minutes, okay.
Well, you're not stopping them. I have to give an answer within the three minutes.
Just state your name and your address for the reporter.
Nancy Novabrino, 110 Lexington Avenue. Mr. Wanko, I just wanted to ask you something. You're saying that nothing has, nothing will change, right? If nothing is.
I didn't say nothing will change.
Well, and the classes, the classes.
I said we are combining classes, that's a change.
All right.
For example, Guitar III did not have enough students enrolled.
Okay.
So I combined it with Guitar II. That's a change, but we're still offering the same courses that the child signed up for. We had a course called Film, one student. It was being run with one student. Tell me how I can have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of this city with one student in a class?
No, I, I agree with you.
That's a change. So I never said there's no changes.
All right, now, with, like, one of the parents has said about with the children, you can take the AP classes, and what if they're not in the AP class, they're, they're in art class, all right? They wanna take the English, English courses. Will they be with the children that were in the academy, or will it be mixed?
It will be a mix of Level A, which is decided by the director, so everyone who's in Level A is together, Level B, honors or AP.
All right, and now, another thing too. All right, since we don't have a gifted and talented.
Speak a little louder.
All right. Since you're taking this away from the high school, all right?
Taking what away?
The academy, all right?
The academy is being decentralized, it's not being taken away.
Now, why, now they're School 14, all right? How come that's still going to be School, PS 14, a gifted and talented, and that not being taken away?
All right, I think I've already addressed that, but maybe Dr. Dagman wants to add a little more?
The gifted and talented program in the elementary school goes back to nineteen seventy-seven. You're right, there is an application process that goes through grades five to eight. We have one school, not one high school, one comprehensive high school. The gifted and talented program in a high school is the AP and honors courses. However, we still have to provide for our exceptional children in the elementary schools. There are exceptional children that are in number one school through number twelve school. So what we do is we provide the magnet school at a rescue school for them, where they have two teachers per grade level. However, they, they intermingle with the sports programs there, they have the graduation there, there are no distinctions, they go on field trips, their teachers collaborate, so there is a collaboration over there. So the difference is that you have one high school for, for the gifted children up here, but you'd still have to provide for twelve elementary schools for those exceptional children.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you just put the call back, I'll read. Next up, Rod and Alicia Monti, 11 East 39th Street. And then after the, Mr. Monti is Wayne Pratko. Get yourself ready.
Rod Monti, 11 East 39th Street. Most of the things I was gonna ask have really been pretty much addressed by everybody that's been up in front of the panel. But a couple of things that I think that, that have been missed a little bit is, I, I believe all children should have an opportunity, but this is also, having, giving children something to aspire to is something good too. And I think if that's how you promote the academy, some of the other children that are in the school might wanna move to that. And then when I hear something like that in passion speech, I think it was Katie, her, her name was that she made, I don't see how, as educators, that doesn't affect you, I just see blank stares, and that to me is a little disheartening. I, I really thought that, that was an excellent speech. And basically, what I feel like you did here, and, and I think it was summed up by a couple of people, but I'll make it shorter, was bait and switch, which is illegal to most consumers in many states. You promised one thing and you're delivering something else. And these children worked really hard to get into that. When my, my child was accepted, she was thrilled, and I will tell you, somebody mentioned about the letter, her letter came later than most of her friends, she was devastated. I think that was the hardest, not only for my child, but for myself and my wife, that the hardest twenty-four hours, you're like, oh my goodness, she didn't make it. And when I actually came to the school to see it, I sent pictures to a lot of my friends and said, could you imagine if we had this opportunity when we were in high school to do that? And a lot of what my friends said, if, if I did, I would have done a lot better because I would have worked my butt off to get into that academy. So I don't really see why that, that's such an issue. Now, I don't mind co-mingling of, of anybody, I think that's a great thing. I, I don't think that's bad, but I also think it's good to give these kids something to aspire to, and you've taken that away.
Next up is Mr. Wayne Pratko. Okay, and after that is Lecca Saunders.
Wayne Pratko, 21 Dodge Street, Bayonne. I just wanna make a comment about what someone said earlier, that there are students who count, who, who care, and students who don't care. I taught everything from inclusion to Level A. Every one of my students cared, and I cared about all of them. I am fifty-nine, I'm one of the numbers, and to me, I can't, it's incomprehensible. If we lived in a world where merit, experience, compassion, kindness is how we measure a person's value, I would be invaluable. person's value, I would be invaluable. So you're going to rehire people based on their evaluations? Well, that's no... That's a no-brainer, okay? With a higher 3.70, 26 highly qualified, and the rest qualified, that's not the reason. I can't comprehend it. You can talk to guidance counselors, Student Services, my VP, my principal. There were students who were in trouble, who were slipping through the cracks. I brought them to the attention of Student Services, they got the help they needed, and they excelled. Whenever this student had a problem, I went to their guidance counselor. Some of those guidance counselors were present during those meetings, and the parents praised me endlessly for the help I gave them. Now, I'm in a unique position. I am the oldest one in my department, and I am the oldest one of the 59. I responded to 14 ads for jobs. I got no responses. Why? My age. Who's going to hire someone 64 years old? I have not lost my passion. I worked with Ava Finity for a year, great teacher, she knows my ability. So there's only one thing that makes sense to me. You're probably taking the recommendation of one person. But I am more than one person. I did a lot above and beyond what any teacher could possibly do. I have never lost my passion. I worked for 38 years as a department chairperson. No pension. If I don't get my job back, I will lose my house. I have no health insurance. Financially, the only future I have is the future. Currently, I was home instructing a kid who has leukemia. He gets out August 1st. His mother said to me, this is the first time Mark has smiled. I cannot go back in August because it will affect my unemployment, because I can only see him two days a week. I just don't understand it. I don't understand it. I just thought it was a no-brainer. So my question is, I would like a professional courtesy to meet with Dr. Wanko for an explanation. I worked extremely hard. I did my job. I'm good at what I do, and I know where the recommendation comes from, and it's highly suspect.
All you have to do is call Mrs. Trions. I'll be happy to meet with you. And you've encapsulated what this district is at this point because of mismanagement of funds.
You know what it is? A lot of these students come to us broken. I know that. It's our job to fix them. And believe me, I'm into 7:30 every morning, and the kids come in, and I help them, not always academically. We talk about things. I have not lost that. And at my age, no one is going to hire me.
Call Mrs. Trions. I'll be happy to meet with you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Prattco. After Ms. Saunders, Anthony D'Amico.
Hi. Oh, my gosh. I'm just going to be honest, I really don't know what to say. But good evening, everyone. I'm LeMeka Saunders, a mother of a Bayonne High School student, Rosetta Thomas, who's actually a student of Mr. Wayne Prattco. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I know you have a lot on your hands. I don't think many people realize how hard these decisions are to make. They're never easy for anybody, especially you. You've spent your whole life here, right, in Bayonne? So I originally came here today because I wanted to support and speak for Mr. Prattco. And thank you for agreeing to meet with him. But I want to say that he has been here in Bayonne specifically as an educator for 44 years of his life. He's been a teacher, a coach, counselor advisor, drama club advisor, chairman of the English Board. And I'm just asking, you know, and us making these decisions, we, you know, we're not perfect. If we can have some consideration for someone who's spent their life work taking care of us. He is not only my daughter's English teacher, he's her mentor. He's a beacon of life and a pillar for my family. I'm a single mother of two children. If it wasn't for Mr. Prattco, I don't have the time to tell you how my life is. And he's the one thing that keeps me sane. He gives me hope and future, and not just in the classroom, but outside of the classroom for many of his students. And I'm not going to take up any more time. I'm just going to ask if we can not forget about someone like Mr. Wayne Prattco, because what else does he have? He's given us his all. So maybe there's something that we can give for him.
All right.
Okay, thank you so much.
We have not forgotten about any of the teachers who have not been brought back yet, and we are doing our best to try and right the financial ship. We are working on another tier. But again, I have to get the finances in order first.
Anthony D'Amico, and after Anthony, Alex Cuzio.
Anthony D'Amico, 73, West Sixth Street. Just a couple of questions, and then you guys can answer, so I can save the three minutes. What's the status of the state audit? Do we know the status?
Can you hear you? The sort over here. Thank you.
Okay, what's the status of the state audit?
The status of...
State audit.
State audit.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah. Mr. D'Amico, the auditors are still with us. They said originally that it would not be until September that they came up with their final findings. We've been working diligently with them, giving them all the information that they've requested. They've requested contracts going back to 2012. They're looking at employee records, they're looking at purchase orders, they're looking at employee headcounts, and everything that they've asked for, they've received, and we're working with them in tandem to get to the bottom of this.
Okay. What's the status of the permanent superintendent search, since we only get Wanko here for one, renew for two? So what's the status of that search? Because we should be looking for a permanent super. No?
It hasn't started yet, and...
Are we waiting for any reason?
Well, this gentleman's here 26 days, and we do need to know what our financial status is. That audit's due in September, and it's certainly on our radar.
So we're waiting for the audit to look for a permanent solution?
It's certainly a good tool to help us know exactly where we're headed. Yes, it's part of it.
All right. I had recently contacted the board office and found out that the board's closed on Fridays in the summer.
Yes.
Is that a paid day off for the board members that do get paid, or?
No. The hours are still 40 hours. They just do it in four days. It's an extended workday.
Let's correct something you just said. Board members...
I didn't say members, I said board workers that are kept paid.
Board workers that are kept paid.
And what's the... I know they mentioned we were getting a state monitor. What's the status on that?
Matt, we're at a deficit, right? Being that we're projecting to end the year not in a deficit situation, a monitor is not really put upon us right now. So we're working with the state. We've been in touch with Mr. Glenn Florney, who is the director of all monitors in the state. He is actively trying to get someone to come in here. The only problem is that, in his own words, Bayonne is geographically difficult to get in and out of and get here. But as we all know, if you've been in traffic by the turnpike or the bridges... But we are working with him, we're in contact with him. But because we're ending the year not in a deficit situation, our fund balance, we're projecting, Matt, over $1 million, right? In our fund balance, that we may not need a monitor, Mr. D'Amico.
So just real quick, so the assemblyman said we were getting a state monitor, now we're not getting a state monitor because we're not convenient?
I would just like to say this. We self-reported, this board self-reported when we found out what was going on. Nobody needed to make any other phone call. We stepped up because we wanted to know, and now we're waiting to know.
Absolutely.
I know you did.
Thank you. Alex Cuzio. And after Alex, it'll be Francine Vida.
All right. Alex Cuzio, 271 Gordon Road, Madeline. I'm standing up here in a bit of a unique situation in that I technically don't work here anymore. And I have nothing to lose, nor nothing to gain by standing here and saying here anything tonight. So really, anything I say is from the heart. I don't want to repeat what we've been saying all night, and so I'm going to start with a change of subject. First of all, I just want to thank you for supporting the Galapagos Islands trip that happened at the end of June and July. It was, for me, being something of a traveler, it was easily the most amazing experience of my life. And I feel somewhat guilty that I wasn't taking it with my family, but I was taking it with my new family. And I truly mean that, because my students are truly my heart. And the decision to leave this city was the hardest decision I've ever had to make as an educator. And, you know, we've kind of struggled with the question all night about what the academy is and what it represents. And I have a prepared script here, but I'm not even going to touch it because I don't think there's anything there that hasn't been said already. But as an academy teacher, I just thought I would bring a bit of a unique perspective to the table here. What the academy gave four years ago when I got in at the ground level was a small learning community. And I think tonight what we've gotten caught up with largely is semantics. You know, what is the academy? What is it not? Are these, you know, academy classes, not academy? What the academy was, was a small learning community. And I think that's what schools are increasingly striving... That's a model that schools are increasingly going to, including some of the schools, some of the best high schools in the state, about creating environments where students don't feel... They feel like they are somebody. And I'm not saying that in a derogatory way to the rest of the high school, but we have 2,600 students. And it's hard to feel... It's hard not to feel like you're a little lone fish in a big ocean. And, you know, as academy teachers, we don't feel like we're any more special than anybody else. Our students, we hope that they don't feel more special than anybody else, and we always try to maintain a level of humility and instill that level of humility in our students. But I think what you got over the last four years was a small learning community that just grew immensely close. And you had students, a limited number of students, who got very close with their teachers, their teachers got very close with them. We got to know them on a very personal level. We knew their hopes, their dreams, you know, what their parents did for a living, what their siblings were doing. And, you know, we are able to personalize their instruction in a way that just isn't possible when you have that mixed population. Again, that is nothing derogatory about Bayonne High School as a whole. I came here 10 years ago. I love this school. I always loved this school. You know, this is not a, you know, academy versus everybody else. That's what's paining me to hear this tonight, is this sort of notion that this is us versus everybody else. That's not what this is about. Okay? This... If we could bring the spirit of what we have in the academy to the rest of the school, and Dr. Wanko, you say that is your goal, and my God, I hope that is the outcome. Because if the rest of the school could experience what we have in the academy, the sense of family, then you know what? I will rest easy at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Francine Vida is up next. And then after Francine will be Michael Morris. No folks are pointing to watches and stuff. I'm trying my best with three minutes, folks.
Hi, good evening. My name is Francine Vida. I live at 9 Country Village Court. I've been teaching in the Bayonne School District for going into my eighth year. I'm one of the teachers who's listed on that board as a transfer teacher. Obviously, I'm not very happy about it, as I love the school that I was in. I've been there for four years. I love Dr. Quinn, I love the teachers I worked with, I love the students. But I understood that was a possibility coming here tonight. However, it's July 26th, and it's still not telling me what grade I'm teaching. It just says, I'm going from Harris Mann School, elementary school teacher, K-6 slash 5-8 Language Arts, which is not actually true, because I taught 7th grade Language Arts for four years there. And then it's saying I'm going to Henry Harris, teaching elementary school K-6 slash 5-8 Language Arts. So virtually, it's saying I can be teaching anything from kindergarten to eighth grade. And I really don't think it's fair, at this point in the game, that many of us, and it's not just me, because most of the teachers listed on there are not told what grade they're teaching unless they're a special teacher, as well as 116 teachers that were hired back on July 6th, they don't know where they're teaching. And I think it's a disservice to the teachers, as well as the students, who we have no idea what grade we're teaching, and how am I supposed to prepare? So if I go from teaching 7th grade for four years and 5th grade Language Arts for two years, if I get put into first grade, how am I going to prepare for that? And when will I find out what I'm teaching?
Francine, I'm going to let Mr. Copaz answer, but we have been assured that credentials are another thing that is looked at. Your certifications and stuff, not you, the collective you. People are in spots where they are certified to be.
Right, we are certified.
But I'm going to let Dr. Copaz answer.
Ms. Vida, you are correct. We did have to transfer fine teachers like yourself. You were a fantastic teacher, absolutely. We did close 15 or 16 classes throughout the elementary school, plus so many sections at the high school, which tenured people obviously would have to come down in elementary if they would fit. So we had a huge piece with now 60 less teachers to do so. We tried to work for months. We have a fine plan. We know it's going to work because of fine teachers like yourself. We will be getting you your grade tomorrow. We never put a grade on a resolution due to the fact, because that's principal's prerogative. If Dr. Quinn, where you worked at Harris Mann, called me and said, I don't want Francine Vida working in the 7th grade, I want her in the 8th, that's her building. She takes ownership, and I respect that as a principal and as an educator. You know, I do come from a family of educators, my mother, my father, my sisters, and my wife. And, you know, I live with a wife who's an educator in Jersey City, and the worst thing I could ever hear is when, you know, she's transferred to a different grade. It's uncomfortable, it's uneasy. But you're a fine teacher, and you're going to rise to the occasion, and Henry Harris is a beautiful place, and my daughter's going there next year. And I'm happy you're going to be there, Ms. Vida.
All right, I know. I'm not saying that, you know...
And I'm going to get those letters out to you, hopefully tomorrow. You know, we do have a lot of work here, but I'm going to hopefully get you an email or a letter or a phone call to every one of those transfers tomorrow.
And that goes for the other 116 as well? Because I know that some of them have asked me just to...
Absolutely. I'm going to get the principals all of their rosters tomorrow. Make sure that they don't want to make any adjustments. Have it solid, and if I can get those to you tomorrow. But I could have your assignment to you tomorrow, Ms. Vida. And again, we do apologize, but, you know, we know we're in good shape because of fine educators like yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copaz.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Morris, you're up. Next up is Francis... Sorry, Francis. Labardi? You'll be up next, after Michael.
Good evening. Mike Morris, 123 Avenue C, Bayonne. I'd like to make it perfectly clear, before I make my statement, that I do not have any issues regarding the academy. I am not against it. Just like to make comment, though, on a few different issues. To quote someone that spoke previously, "You took my choice away." Well, I can tell you that as a student here in Bayonne High School, when I went here and graduated in 1977, I didn't have that choice as a student when I walked through the front doors. But I can also tell you that I had some of the greatest teachers in the history of Bayonne High School. Now, the gentleman stated that his child had a problem going back and forth to classes. Well, I can tell you that I had classes in all six floors of this building. I had reg class in room 320, cafeteria in the main building, honors English with Ms. Chowski in the main building, honors history with Ms. Baroff, who taught me what discipline was about. She required us to have a copy of the New York Times with us every single day of the week. Otherwise, you couldn't come in her class. You would have to go see your house director. She was my adjunct professor at NYU when I was a student there, and I was proud to have her, and she gave me the greatest respect and admiration. And sometimes, we all able... And sometimes, we all able, we were all able to manage our time and get to our classes on time within all of these buildings, or I should say floors. We weren't sheltered. We interacted with each other with kids that were in the college prep courses, business, vocational tech, and we had no harmful issues. And by the way, I had a minimum of three hours or more of homework every single night while working a part-time job as a kid in high school. Every student has the same opportunities that we were afforded. I would tell you, work together and take advantage of the greatest opportunity afforded you, your education. Thank you.
And then after Francis, it's Victoria Williams.
Good afternoon. Francis Labidi, 37 Lord Avenue. In a way, piggybacking off of what Mr. Cozziola has said before, what the academy had meant to me as a student, now a sophomore in Bayonne High School, was a sense of community that being in close proximity to other classes brought. I was able to meet many of my close friends that I have now, one of those being Cisco Espinoza, of who I have a letter that I will read later on after I speak for myself. I was able to be brought into a community where students wanted other students to succeed in the fields that they wanted to be in. Before I met the people that I was able to through the academy, I didn't want to really be involved with the school this year because I knew freshman year was going to be a little bit of a struggle for me. Now I stand here as the Latin Club parliamentarian, as well as a state board for the Latin Club. I have received a bronze medal in the St. Barnabas Science Fair, and I have participated in a numerous amount of other science fair, as well have being able to have the opportunity to travel to Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands to earn college credit courses, so I will be able to better myself in the future for the field that I want to be in as a neurologist. I have found my love for science through the academy as I didn't really like science too much as I was coming in as a freshman. And the teachers that I had and the students that I was able to meet through upper grades and upper classes, I was able to find my love for science. I would also like to bring up something that we were talking about before, as Mr. Baccarella said that it was a option to take zero period gym as if you were good in your classes. And I had talked to my guidance counselor, Ms. Walsh, about this, and I am not able to take the class. And as of next year, I will not have an elective due to taking a double-period math, where I will take pre-calculus as well as Algebra II, if there would be any way that I would be able to have that class.
Well, obviously, I couldn't give that answer right now, but I assure you, first thing tomorrow, I will do a full investigation as to look into your schedule and see if that is all possible.
Thank you very much. And now I will read a letter on behalf of Cisco Espinoza, who is unable to come to this meeting because he is attending the National Latin State...
Well, I have to cut you there. Now, Cisco's letter is part of our communications tonight. If another student would like to read his letter, but you don't have enough time to finish his letter, but the board has his letter. If someone else would like to read it, I'd be happy to let another member read it, but you're already over your three minutes.
Okay. Would they need a card to come up here to read his letter?
I'm sure they could fill out a card.
Okay. Thank you. Have a good night.
If you want to give it to somebody. Next up is Victoria Williams.
My name is Victoria Williams. I own a home at 459 Kennedy Boulevard. I have four children. You cannot hear me? Okay. I have four children, and I purposely moved to Bayonne for the reason of having them in a very good education system. I'm originally from California. I served my time, eight years in the Marine Corps, and I decided to settle here as a veteran. I've listened to everything. I have a bonus son, I have a stepson that'll be attending Bayonne High School next year. But I'm not here to really talk about that. What I'm here to really talk about is other types of students, students with IEPs. Particularly, I have a preschool student, okay? And my older son, who is going to 8th grade, he goes to Midtown Community School. I just want to know, Superintendent Interim Acting, if a child has an IEP for inclusion, why are they being told they cannot have an inclusion schedule? When I was asked that, when I asked that question, why he cannot have a full-day inclusion schedule, I was told that they would change his IEP to suit the needs of the monetary, like, you know, the needs of pretty much of the board, not what my son actually deserves and what is his legal right to receive. So I just want to know, how is that, how is that fair? And how is that okay?
All right. First, I'd like to thank you for your service to the country.
Thank you.
And then I'd like to say, I don't have the information in front of me.
I can give that to you.
But if you give your name to Mrs. Treeons, I will look into that tomorrow because it's not supposed to be driven by money. The IEP is supposed to be driven by needs, and that's what we do. So I'll investigate fully.
Correct. I asked for an out-of-district placement, and I was told no. Also, for my preschool son who has an IEP, there's been no communication of school locations for him with an IEP. This year, he was afforded the opportunity to be at School 14. They had, the first time ever, had an inclusion class there for preschool students. However, I was told, for whatever reason, they do not know if he will be able to continue there. There were some issues, I'm not sure. But as of right now, I do not even know where my son will be attending school, whether it's in any school in Bay... I mean, I know it'll be at some school. But, you know, it makes it hard for me because, you know, me and my husband, like, if I have, I teach in New York. I'm a New York City public school teacher. If I have to get to him, how do I know where he's going to be? That's a big issue. And I have one last thing.
If you have any other questions, though, regarding your specific child, you can speak to the administration, of course, and make an appointment.
Okay.
It's more of a personal matter, your student and your child.
Understood.
These are very specific issues.
I understand.
That in all fairness to the folks up here, they don't know much about the particular case.
That's understood. Understood. My last big thing. I've had numerous issues with the bus service for Bayonne this year. I had to put my son on the special needs bus. He was four years old when he started. They could not tell me where he was the first day. I had to rush here and locate my child. However, how can the bus service be better held accountable for forgetting to pick up special needs students? It was a day close to the end of the year, and in turn, the student loses a day of instruction. So if you weren't aware of that, that's a very serious issue that I called to make very big stink about, and no one ever got back to me.
Okay. I was not aware of that, not made aware of that, but perhaps, Mr. Smith?
It was for all of the, pardon me, I am not trying to be rude. But it was for all of the PM students who had IEPs. They were all forgotten that day, and they missed that day of school.
I'm just going to ask, Mr. Smith, you're in charge of transportation, because I know nothing about this.
First, I'm hearing about this, Ms. Williams.
I spoke to Joe.
Do you have the date that this happened?
Yes. And I also accelerated it to Mr. Costello, and he apologized profusely.
He never shared it with us, though. If you get me the date, if you email me or call me in the morning, I'll have a full investigation done as to the who, what, where, when, and why. Believe me, you take that very seriously.
Mrs. Lamson?
Central Office of...
And if I could just add, contact us right away with any issues.
I did. I accelerated to the principal. I accelerated above. I wrote emails. And I felt like I had to come to this forum because I hope no other people are going through these type of issues when it comes to, I know we focus a lot on our kids that are gifted the academy, and that's great, but we need to also keep focused on our kids who have these additional needs.
It is an important issue. I'm really glad you brought it up.
My kids are important, too.
Yes. And they will follow through. Thank you for bringing it up.
Next up is Mr. Alex Callanese. Easy? Alex, still here? After Alex is Paulette Vasallo. Yes. Alex, just hold one sec. Oops. Sorry. We're good?
Do you feel nervous?
Alex Callanese, 46 West 13th Street, Bayonne, New Jersey. Most of the questions I had today have already been covered, but just to reiterate a little bit, I have a senior in the academy, had great three-years experience. I have a freshman coming in now. My decision would have definitely changed if I had known the academy was going to be affected in any way possible. I was promised an academy experience, a close-knit, small community. Dr. Wanko, the last time I was up on his podium, you had mentioned that you wanted equality throughout the school system. You wanted equality throughout the school. I took that as, well, the application process to get into the academy is your equality through the city. The directors decided who would get in and who would not get in the academy. Am I right, am I wrong?
You're wrong. It was one person, wasn't it, directors?
I understand that the directors were the one who decided who would get in, that one person, if we're talking about Ms. Laura Craig, decided which part, how that would accommodate in the schedule. But from what I understand...
Am I correct or not?
Dr. Deglin, would you like to...
Yeah, I believe you are correct, that Mrs. Craig was involved in the performing arts component, I believe, and then the directors were involved in STEM, humanities, and scholars.
So they decided who would get in for the STEM course, not just Mrs. Craig, correct?
Mrs. Craig was involved in the process, correct?
Yes, of organizing everything, but the directors themselves were the ones who are letting, admitting these kids into the academy, the experience.
Correct.
Okay. A lot of the attitudes of people like myself is, this board here, besides Dr. Wanko, you've promised us four years. My daughter's coming in as a freshman. Again, what Ms. Harrigan said, after four years, you want to banish the academy or change it or alter it in any way, do so after this incoming freshman class has already served its time, because you promised us this. Otherwise, we don't have the chance now to get him into a different school. I could have sent my daughter to the high tech, to the county prep, to the St. Doms, you name it. She's a straight-A student from Nicholas Arezco Gifted and Talented Program. I feel you owe it to our students, our children, your students, that you keep this academy running the same way it has been for the next four years. The next coming class of next year, you do what you want, but you promised us an academic experience. And another thing, I just want to check with Mr. Baccarella, the zero period where you were confused about it, Dr. Wanko, you're saying that it was offered for everybody, but now it's determined on your academic classes, if you can meet that means. Well, how are you going to know that? Because my daughter's just going to start STEM this year. Obviously, she must have passed the requirements if she was into the STEM program with honors classes.
All right. My understanding would be if they're in the STEM program, they need an extra period, that Mr. Baccarella would have them in zero period, because I've met that. I'd also like to say, we have far more offerings than high tech or St. Alloysius or any of the elder schools that you mentioned.
But you don't have the experience that was promised to us, the academy style, the small group. These kids excel by pushing each other. You have a fair and open policy because every year, a student in Bayonne High School, whether he's a freshman to senior or to junior, can apply to the academy, can apply to the AP courses, the honor courses, as long as the directors deem it as they can handle that workload. Am I right, am I wrong?
Mr. Degman tells me that's the case, correct?
Yes.
If you apply for an AP or honors course, and you're eligible, and you wanted to take the rigor, then you would be accepted. And I think that's what we spoke about.
Yeah, okay. So the equality question is already answered, then. We do have equality throughout the school system. Not like the last time I was up here, we thought that we didn't have the equality. Correct, Dr. Wanko?
Thank you for your time and your questions. Next up is Mr. Paulette Vasallo. And then our last speaker after Paulette is Arum Choudry.
Good evening. Paulette Vasallo, 22 East 23rd Street. All night long, I've been hearing parents and Dr. Wanko going back and forth. Parents are worried that the academy is going to be taken away or not going to be here anymore. You're saying, no, it's still going to be here. Can you just please clarify for the audience what changes to the academy you are going to make as of September, starting freshman year coming in? My son is already a junior, and I need, and I'm sure every parent needs to know exactly what their child is going to have come September.
The same courses that were being offered before in the academy are still being offered. The change that we're talking about now is a student who might be in the drama portion, they would still be taking, let's say, dance or guitar or whatever it might be, but they would not be taking an academy-only Level A or B class. They would be taking a Level A or B English class with anyone in the school, not just academy students.
Outside of the academy.
Right. So that's really the basic change. All the courses are still in there, so whatever they've elected to take in the academy is still being offered. What I did is combine the classes where it fell below 15 so that we could co-mingle and still offer the course. So whatever their major was, if they're STEM, they're in STEM.
Okay, but they're going to be in STEM in the academy wing. Their classes are, right now, have always been, for the last three years, been in the academy.
So you're just talking about geography?
Right. Well, geography and teachers and the... Sorry, I'm getting a little nervous here.
If I'm understanding the question, you're just talking about location of the courses?
Location first, yes.
Okay. The dance studio, I'm not moving. So they're going to be there, if they're in dance. The same with the guitar class, because that's air-conditioned for that. But a course like English Level A could be anywhere.
So right now, my son is in STEM. He takes honors math and science. He does not take honors English or history. So next year, he'll be taking English and history outside of the academy.
Right. And I'm assuming those would be Level A classes he would take.
Yes.
Right. So he would be in that mix, and that course could be anywhere throughout the campus.
Okay. And they are no longer having zero period? The freshmen coming in are no longer having zero period for the academy?
No, Mr. Baccarella addressed that.
Right, no, for, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Vasallo.
Thank you.
Arum?
Hello, my name is Arum Choudry, and Francis Labidi couldn't read Cisco's letter that he wrote to you, so I will be reading that for you. So Cisco writes, "Dear Honorable Board Members, although I prefer our more amicable encounters, there come times when serious matters must be discussed. Let me begin by introducing myself. I am Cisco Espinoza of 716 Avenue A, and I am an incoming senior of Bayonne High School and a fourth-year academy student. Several of you may remember me from previous board meetings in which you graciously honored me for achievements in a variety of subject areas, particularly that of STEM. I cannot deny that my high school career has been a perpetual cycle of success and high achievement bred by dedication and countless hours of arduous work. Upon coming to this school three years ago, I had no idea of what to expect or what my role would be. Thus, you could imagine how profoundly I have been impacted by the wonderful and incomparable high school experience which I have received thus far. Choosing the Academy of Fine Arts and Academics over other schools such as High Tech High School or St. Peter's Preparatory School gave me advantages and opportunities to excel, which will follow me for the entirety of my education and career. Here, I was met by phenomenal teachers whom held their students and the program to the highest... highest standards while still making themselves personable and available to help any and all students. Thanks to this spectacular program, I have succeeded along with my peers for years, and our success is not merely measured in our grades. Apart from maintaining honor roll, I have also been blessed to perform research with our science department and thrice attain gold medals and other acclamations for my work. Inclusively, you may recall my peer, Arch Bannery, achieving fourth place in his category at the International Intel Science Fair, to which my friends and I accompanied him as his observers. Most recently, I returned from a research expedition and cultural immersion experience in Ecuador and the Galapagos Islands. I remain astonished, looking back at these highlights of my high school career. And I am rather thankful to the teachers and administration who allowed for me to attain these achievements, which, may I remind you, is merely a handful of the things that we have done through the academy program. The academy program at Bayonne High School was one of the most innovative and most fruitful decisions which has ever been made in the educational history of the city. Across America, thousands of schools are opening their own academies to foster higher education, as we have done in our district. Upon recognizing this, it becomes flabbergasting to think that a program with such a track record of outstanding achievement could be considered for destructuring or decentralizing. Many mistakes have been made in the past in regards to the functioning of the schools, however none compare in gravity as this choice. For the past five years, the academy program has enriched Bayonne High School and returned this school to the map. It was evident all those years ago, and it is evident now that this program would carry heavy burden. This burden was to take the most competitive and dedicated students and hone in their abilities to guide them to a great success in college and career settings. Truly, the academy has always been on a mission. This mission was to seek and find the hidden potential in every student and nurture their strengths so that they may have the best possible chance of succeeding in the highly competitive world in which we live. As of late, there has been clear and prominent opposition to the latest decisions of administration in regards to the fate of the academy program. Unfortunately, these decisions have been thoughtless and unscrupulous in regards to the education of our students, and they do not follow any philosophy in this district, which has always advocated for providing the best possible education to its students. The decentralization of the academy is nothing more than a strategic dismantling process which is taking a blind eye to years of hard work, dedication, and innovation. Claims have been made that this program is unsustainable or unfair to the high school as a whole. However, I challenge these claims. I would like for people, particularly our board members and administration, to recognize the benefits of this program as it existed for all these years. It is a fact that college acceptance rates have improved in Bayonne High School. It's a fact that all academic departments have seen an increase of student success and achievement, both inside and outside of the classroom environment. It's a fact that students who attended this program have received an undeniably outstanding high school experience. Students of the academy are students of Bayonne High School. There's not special treatment for any student, and there's not a sense of segregation amongst the students. In fact, not, in fact, students of the academy truly have the greatest experience of high school because they receive not only unmatched academic standards to which they are held, but they also gain a great sense of culture as they have every opportunity to immerse themselves among people from every walk of life, and in many cases, from various parts of the world. In comparison to other programs such as High Tech High School or St. Peter's Prep, this program offers social immersion incomparable and unmatched without the needs of decentralization. This concept of decentralization is more accurately dilution to the point of dissipation. Upon first hearing of this decentralization, I assumed that it was a move made on a political basis. The name would be removed, but the integrity of the program would remain. However, I have been sadly mistaken. The name is remaining, but every aspect of this program's integrity has been challenged and slowly demolished. What will be achieved here is not a fixation for the budget crisis, it is instead the continuation of the old crisis. I can guarantee that hundreds of students will be leaving if the previous decisions made here do not desist. And with each of those students, thousands of dollars leave as well. I hope that the outcry of concern students and parents will be sufficient for you to recognize the need to remediate the decisions previously made here. For the sake of the future of the school and this district, I urge you to stop and reinstate this program so it may continue the excellence which it has produced all these years. Courageously yours, Cisco Greg Espinoza.
That is the last of our cards for this evening.
Mr. DeAngel.
Any final comments?
I have a few questions. Dr. Wanko, this is the first I heard those numbers that you gave out earlier. When you said it costs two and a half, approximately two and a half million dollars for the academy, what did that entail?
Material, furniture, flooring, overtime pay. I did not put in regular hour work, and that's over the course of from 2013 to 2016.
Did that include the salaries of the teachers?
No.
No, no. Okay. I would point out that the academy, I want to be, I represent all 850 teachers along with the secretaries, and I certainly want to see the academy survive for many reasons. One particular reason that no one has mentioned, I don't think, is this is one of the few communities in Hudson County that do not have charter schools, and we probably don't have any charter schools is because we have the academy.
Exactly.
That is what some people use the academies for. So I certainly want the academy to survive. And I understand all the parents that spoke, and I think I feel the same way if my child was in that academy in the middle of their career. But what I need to say to the Board of Ed, the reason we're in this spot, we wouldn't even be discussing this tonight if we weren't six, if we didn't have a $6 million deficit. That's where this came. If there were no deficit, this academy probably would have gone on the way it has been going on. So the problem is, we need the board to make sure they make up that deficit and that it never reoccurs again. Because if that had happened, these parents wouldn't have to be here, and I wouldn't have to lose 53 teachers. Because when September rolls around, I'm not having 850 teachers staff the city. I'm having 780-something. So those teachers have to do that much more work to make up for the 53. I also have 53 people, many of whom are devastated by the fact that they lost their job, that they dedicated one, two, three, or four years to this district, and they're just out on the street. So the root problem of all this, no matter what side of the ledger you're on, is that somehow, somebody is responsible for running a $6 million deficit. And I would, I would ask that the board be vigilant going forward and make sure things like this don't happen. More importantly, I would ask the people in this audience and whoever was here tonight to oversee what this board does so that it doesn't happen again. Had it, just to end, had it not happened, I wouldn't have lost 53 teachers, and I don't think anything would have changed in that academy as those, as the parents wanted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeAngel.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
All motion.
Motion by Trustee Cruden. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Trustee Finerty. So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Trustee Cruden--
Yes.
Trustee Desmond--
Yes.
Trustee Finerty--
Yes.
Trustee Gerilic--
I'm--
Trustee Llandes absent. Trustee Munoz--
Yes.
Trustee Ryan--
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck and President Broderick are absent. It is 10:03, we are adjourned.